I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic through which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, educational presentation, Dr. Matrula.
Okay, thank you very much, President Hardy. Before I ask Ken for the physical plan update, I just want to take a few moments here and, you know, address the start of school. As you are well aware, we are in a virtual format. All of our teachers and professionals are on campus. And I'd like to say that we are off to a very, very good start. I really appreciate the teachers and our staff and their cooperation, and especially to all of our parents and guardians, most of all, our children. There is no question that the synchronous concept here is much, much better and at a higher level than where we were in the spring. And please believe me, there's no question in my mind and my heart, I want our kids in the classroom, learning traditionally. There are students that thrive in virtual environments. But for the betterment of our children and for our country, nothing beats a traditional environment and traditional concepts. That being said, COVID-19 is real. We are still in a moderate phase. And one of my meetings, one of many meetings, but one of my meetings yesterday, now Berks County is one of six counties on the Department of Health COVID-19 watch. And there are pockets of areas that have had substantial increases. And one life lost is one life too many. And I certainly would never want that from a bad decision. The ramifications are one thing, but the bad decision when it comes to life can't be, can't be even questioned. Always erring the side of safety, especially for our children and our staff. So we'll continue to monitor this and we will look at the data, work with the CDC, the WHO, but most importantly, our Pennsylvania Department of Health. With that in mind, we're going to continue working very hard for our kids. We've had some glitches and some things that needed to be ironed out. And I can tell you, our tech department is working very hard to do that. We do have, I believe, around 25 families that we're working with right now and have been working in terms of connectivity. And I'm glad that that's not more than 25, but I wish it wasn't even 25. But we're doing everything we can to help those individuals. As I know and I've said before, it's a hardship for our parents. Worldwide, it's been unprecedented and we definitely are in uncharted waters. As I've said before, minute by minute, hour by hour, day by day. As the issues arise and change, so will our answers. I'm very concerned for our country and very concerned for our children. I believe our attendance rates were very, very high for the first week. Dr. Futrick, are you there?
I am, sir.
Dr. Futrick, can you give a brief overview of our first week here and where we are right now, sir?
Absolutely, Dr. Matrula. Thank you for sharing and, and good evening, members of the board. Yeah, I'll pick right up with where you started talking about attendance. Our attendance to date in all four buildings combined, we have an average daily attendance of about 94%, which is, which is on par for what we were last year. So we're very pleased with that and we hope that momentum keeps going. In terms of implementation this year, our teachers have done a fantastic job of collaborating together and just really stepping out of their comfort zones and, and attempting things that we've, we've never would have expected our staff, staff members would have to attempt. Demonstrating such a willingness to try new things. Our administrators are certainly engaged with our teachers and supporting them through, through planning. And, you know, it's nice to walk through the classrooms and actually see this type of teaching occurring. And just like Dr. Matrula said, it's not, nothing replaces, you know, in face instruction. This is new. We do have a, you know, a couple of things I think we have to get used to. Most, particularly the thing I think that our teachers are struggling with is being tied to a computer for an extended period of time. It was in quite a few classrooms and that's the one, the one thing that our teachers are saying, you know, is for 45 minutes or 90 minutes at a time, they have to sit in front of the computer and deliver that instruction because that's where our cameras right now are attached to their computers. So, you know, that is something we definitely, you know, for, for people that are active and like to move around and work a classroom a little bit, that is something we definitely have, are going to have to figure out how, how can we accommodate our staff. But honestly, you know, I think we've had a good summer of planning and it's really allowed us to deliver our instruction to not take a step back. And our goal is to make sure that, you know, our kids grow a full academic year, regardless of the environment we're in. So, thank you for asking, Dr. Matrula.
And thank you, Dr. Futrick. Mr. Venino, I'd like for you to share an update here on our pandemic plan and any modifications that we've made here already at the start of the year to ensure safety. Mr. Venino?
Thank you, sir. Yeah, basically, we are prepared to have our students come back sometime and our team is getting together September 29th. We have about 30 professionals on that team. And our steps are to bring our students back to school and what safety protocols will we have in place? Being around the buildings, I mean, teachers are social distancing, wearing the mask. So I think they'll have a lot of practice and be great role models for when our kids arrive in the classrooms.
There's no question about with COVID-19, how it has reshaped society. And as we're going about that, I thank you, Mr. Venino. And speaking of...
I got a question. I got a question, please. I got a question for Alan. Alan, you say my teachers can't be in front of computers that long. How about the kids? Are the kids sitting in front of computers hours, like two hours or what?
No, the nice thing for our, our kids is, is we're kind of chunking our instruction. You know, you know, research finds the average attention span for an adult is, is about nine minutes and for a kid, it's about five minutes. So our teachers realizing that is, is they might deliver instruction, you know, at maybe 20 minutes at the longest, but the most 10 minutes is, is what they're trying to shoot for in a, in a synchronous small group setting. So we are taking that into consideration because I'd go nuts as a kid if I had to sit there for, you know, six hours at a time and, and focus on a computer. You know, the nice thing is we, we do change, you know, if I'm in a middle school or high school, obviously I have, you know, eight or nine different teachers a day. At Cole, I probably have three to four different teachers a day. In elementary school, you might have, you know, two or three different teachers. So I think mixing it up a little bit and keeping your routine is allowing that to, to not be a factor for kids at this point in time.
One thing, one thing Rick, with what Alan just said, or Dr. Futrick just said, in the spring, the statistics are 4.2 hours of instruction for an entire week. That was the average instruction our children received. We cannot repeat that again, nor should any school district in the Commonwealth or in the country repeat that again. So we, we came out of the starting gate and had to make decisions and that was done admirably, but we had to go to the next step here. And there are some challenges with our kids when it comes to attention span. So before two, 4.2 hours of instruction was the average across the country. Mr.?
Before you move on, I'm sorry if I'm interrupting, but you, you made a point about Berks County being on the governor, six counties on the governor's watch list or whatever, the health watch list. I think we need to, you know, it's early, we got nine weeks left, but we need to start wrapping our heads around the fact that we may not be able to go in person at the end of the first quarter if things don't start getting better quicker, quickly. We're averaging in Berks County 30 to 40 cases a day new, and that's not coming down. So if we want to get back to in-classroom, we maybe need to start looking into, what do we do for a hybrid situation? You know, we chose virtual entirely for this quarter. There was comments made that maybe hybrid doesn't work for us. But then Dr. Futrick also said, all options are on the table. So I'm just pointing out to everybody, we need to start wrapping our head around the idea that we may not be able to go back full-time come November. Everybody wants that to happen, including me, but just everybody be prepared.
I completely agree with that, but I am going to go back to what you just said. Said the hybrid model doesn't work here because you have to remember, we have a thousand kids in each one of our buildings. Asynchronous education does not work with the demographics that we have in our school system. So yes, I do agree with you, but I'd be really careful as to how that's going to look. And we are wrapping our heads around it, but we can't take a step back and we're not going to take a step back. With that being said, the COVID cases continue to arise. There were 7,788 total cases of COVID-19 among five to 18-year-olds. Of that total, 486 occurred between August 28th and September 3rd. So yes, those numbers are on the rise, but we're not going to take a step back and we're not going to cheat our kids and we're not going to take a chance on someone's life being lost just to satisfy someone's ego. So we will do that and we are doing that now. So if you have another question, I'd like to entertain it right now.
No, I, I, and actually it wasn't so much directed at you wrapping your head around it because I know you have, but the, the other eight of us need to start, you know, understand that that's still a possibility come November, that we're either going to have to stay virtual or we got to figure out how to make hybrid work. If, you know, they're doing it, I think Mifflin's hybrid, Wilson I think is hybrid, but I'm not sure. So, you know, I'm just saying it, yes, okay, maybe it doesn't work, but then I'll, I'll give you the answer that I get from my people. Okay, why doesn't it work and what do we need to do to make it work?
Well, you, we have got a great team here that can, can...
I understand.
They get our arms around it.
Yep.
But, but let's not dig in on that with other districts too, because they're not us.
Oh, listen, you've heard me say, we're not Wilson, we're not Mifflin. Remember my rant over the color of the track?
Wayne, Wayne, can I jump in for a minute?
Sure, go ahead.
I think we've done the right approach. We're taking nine weeks here to see how this works around the country with people that are going back. And if you're following this in the news at all, since colleges and other school districts around the country have gone back, the number of cases has dramatically increased, especially in the colleges. So I think for us to take a nine-week period here to see how this is going to affect other school districts and colleges and communities. And at the end of that time, I think we can make a more intelligent decision if we want to go to a hybrid, a full-time or stay the way we are. But I think we've taken the right approach at this point. Thank you.
Yes, I agree too that we have.
Okay, yeah.
Go ahead, Otto.
I agree as well.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question also. I read where several schools are talking about taking some students and those that are special ed and need, have special needs. Do, did you hear anything about that, Dr. Joe and Dr. Alan?
Repeat that again, Tony.
Some of the schools are willing to take in the classroom some of the special needs, special ed students with that individual, individualized attention. You know, for those students in particular that haven't, you know, that are unable to, you know, do it virtually. Have you heard anything in that line, you know, about those students coming in to, to the, coming into the school?
Well, we've had some parents inquire and, and once again, we have to be fair and provide faith with all of our children. If we bring in our special needs children, then the same thing should be applied for our traditional children across the board. Now, the reason why I say that, there have been many parents that have reached out to me and have really, really demonstrated and shared their concerns. Many of our kids have immune systems that are compromised. And without getting into anything personal or specific, many of our children with intellectual disabilities also suffer from physical ailments and disabilities as well. And if we're risking their lives and their livelihood, then we're not doing the right thing by them. And I've had many parents also call and say, thank you, yo, my daughter cannot take this risk. Our numbers certainly went up on our, in our virtual school. And believe me, if we could get all of our kids in, especially our special education children, those kids with intellectual disabilities, we would. No one is more of an advocate for our kids across the board than what this district is, and especially myself, having a very broad experience with our special needs kids, especially those that are, that are autistic and our children that are verbal behavior. So it's a, it's a lot broader of a, of a brush stroke than just specifically letting a handful of people come in. It's a safety concern as well. And when you work every day with this, you see and you know just how sensitive that can be when it comes to our kids. And we're adults and as adults, we have to, we have to protect our kids. That's our responsibility. But if we could bring them in, I certainly would do it. But at this time, that's not something that we're going to consider.
Thanks.
You're welcome, Tony. Okay, Mr. Klein, we've had a phenomenal run here with the nutrition and I'd like for you to give an update on our, our nutrition. We're feeding the faculty as, as we do know. But please elaborate on what we've been doing here and where we are right now with our summer nutrition, leading into with the grant.
Sure. Thank you very much, Dr. Matrula, and thank you very much, School Board members. Good evening. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great. Thank you so much. I just wanted to be sure. So I would like to, again, thank Dr. Matrula for his leadership and everyone on the board for their support as we improve service, have been able to serve the students of our district. Grab and go meals, we've been doing this now since the, since the shutdown from, from Governor Wolf. We've been actually doing this every day since March 18th. We've done this right through the red phase of the closures, through the yellow phase, right up into the, to the green phase. And then we went right, right through, right through summer up until actually today. We effortlessly, effortlessly transitioned from the emergency pandemic feeding to our formal summer food service program. The cafeteria staff did a wonderful job during these times. It was such a joy for us to provide this service to the district. And I'm very, very proud of all our food service staff. And I'm thankful for their hardworking loyalty, also to cafeteria managers, Sherry Hoffman, Bobby Lynn Garrett, Julie Hawes. Together with all the cafeteria workers, we were able to accomplish this. So it, it, it's been really great. If the numbers are kind of, kind of staggering when I, when I pulled them together, even I was very surprised at the amount of grab and go meals that we were able to serve. If you can imagine this, this is all happening under the bus canopy over at the Muenberg Elementary Center. So we have a window of opportunity to do that. During, during what I would call emergency feeding, March, April and May, we served 62,238 bagged meals to children. During the summer month, June, July and August, we served 59,844 bagged meals to children. So since we've been doing this bagged meal program in operation, it's a total of 122,082 meals. It's, it's a very large number. It just goes to show you the, the amount of support we had and the amount of need that we had from our district families and the community. People really took it, took the opportunity to come and, and take part in this. It was, it was such a joy to do and thank you again for your support to do it. Currently, we're operating a three-hour window. Every day, school is open, 10:30 to 1:30 at the Muenberg Elementary Center's bus canopy, doing a breakfast and lunch. We're following the guidelines through a waiver that's been, that was accepted federally from the USDA and that was pushed down to, to the state level through PDE. And it came to us at Muenberg, so we were able to accept that waiver so we can continue to serve all these meals under the guidelines of the summer food service program. That means any child 18 years of age and younger can come or the family can come and pick up these meals daily. Again, it was great to have that summer food service program already in place at Muenberg because that made it such a seamless transition. When we went from our regular national school lunch program back in March, when that had to end, we couldn't operate that. We were just, we were able to pick right up into our summer program, which really, I think was a huge, huge benefit to the, to the children of our district and the families in our district.
Kerry, this is Otto and I just want to congratulate you and your team for your outstanding work, your hard work and your compassion for all of these kids who have come in for their, their meals. So well done.
Thank you, Mr. Voight. It was, it was my pleasure to serve everyone.
Thank you, Kerry, and job well done. I love your, your positive attitude and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I, I just two items here. One, I'd like to get into the athletics because this is an emerging item. So if Dr. Moyers is there, if you just brief update on where we are with our, our sports teams, this day-to-day transition and where we are in terms of seating and spectators.
All right, answering your first question, our high school teams successfully started last week. And we've kind of gone off without a hitch. The advantage they had was that we had the summer to prepare from the return to play program. So that got everybody pretty much into the, into the groove in terms of COVID mitigation and social distancing. All the coaches I can't say enough about in terms of what they, what they've done to keep our kids safe yet, you know, provide them with an opportunity to participate. And our junior high staff paid close attention. In many cases, they attended the, the summer workout meeting so they could see for themselves what was going on and they successfully started yesterday. So all of our fall sports are up and running. We've had minimum issues and that's attributed to the coaches and the parents as well for, for the cooperation that they've shown to us as well. In terms of the, the spectators, to be honest, every, every day you wake up, it's, it's like, it's like the opposite of Groundhog Day. Every day is the absolute craziest different day you could, you could imagine with all the differences that, that come down, sometimes hourly. Today, for example, they, they did pass the, the bill in the Senate to allow school districts now to make the decision in terms of how many spectators you will allow on your campus for a particular event. I did also read the Governor Wolf plans to veto this, but they do have the majority to get it passed. So that looks like it's coming. For the time being, this weekend, we will have a football scrimmage and we will have to abide by the, the 2:50 outside. And any of the volleyball or water polo over the next few days, we will abide by the 25 inside. That does present some challenges, for example, for volleyball. You know, that number does include the participants. So you would have your, your two volleyball teams on the court, the two referees, a coach on either side, up to two subs on the bench and then all the other subs out in the hallway on chairs six feet apart. Just, it's mind blowing, the, the changes that we would have to make and the accommodations that we would have to make, but that's where we were headed. But at this point, if that, if that bill does get changed, we will be able to, to limit this. We are being proactive. I'll be working with Mr. Patterson and Mr. Hawes over the next few days in each of our facilities to identify six-foot areas for separation to, to maintain, you know, our, our part in keeping everybody safe.
Thank you, thank you, board. Anybody have any questions?
Yes.
Or Dr. Moyers?
I like to say, Tim, I heard all good stuff about what you're doing, athletic and coach. I appreciate that. The kids need this to be out there.
It gives them something to look forward to.
Right.
I'm a prime example of that. I wouldn't be sitting here right now if it wasn't for athletics. It got me into college, to be quite frank with you. And from there, I guess I grew up a little bit, but without sports and the, and the pushing of my coaches and, and the, and the role models that they were for me, there's no way I would be here and I could say probably the same thing for, for our kids. Our coaches and adults provide them with it, with a great place to be and leadership. And they go on to do great things once they leave us.
That's the number one thing, leadership. A lot of parents say that. Kids need that. Thanks again.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Moyers. Last month, we had a question and we have a little bit of information regarding transportation. So I'd like for Mr. Mathias, our business director and our acting transportation, Mr. Venino, just an update on where we are as a district with the IU and transportation.
Shane, you want me to take this?
Kevin, go ahead. If there's anything you need me to add, I would be happy to do so.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, recently, we received our bill for the March, April, May and June transportation invoice. And on that bill, I think many of us talked about, will we get any, any waivers or any type of discounts? And on the invoice, there is obviously a calculation of unused fuel and there's also a, a discount for calculation of vehicle maintenance. When you add these particular items, it comes to about $43,000 in savings and that excludes the insurance rebate. The IU is still working with their insurance company to process our rebate and I have no idea how much that amount will be. I know it'll be a savings, but that is where we stand now. Currently, we are transporting our outside placement students and non-public students to their educational institutions. And so we expect the bills for August, September, October to be less than what we budgeted for.
Kevin, what's the bill total with or without the discount?
You know, I think it's about $550,000. And that does reflect those discounts that Kevin mentioned, the fuel and the maintenance. And one, one thing I will add, that wasn't on the bill is also we do have savings which were not itemized for all the trips, those additional trips like field trips and athletic activities that, that we, we don't know what they were because they're not on there, but there were savings additionally. And I'll add that compared to budget, we were about 100 grand under budget for the transportation costs, not, would include any salaries, but all the cost to the, to the IU, about, about $100,000.
So it was a 40, let's say $45,000 credit on a $600,000 bill?
Right. And as, as Mr. Venino mentioned, they are still working on, with their, their broker, on any kind of discounts on insurance. We have not got any numbers on that, so we are, we are expecting maybe something back on that.
All right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank, you're, you're welcome. And thank you, Mr. Mathias, Mr. Venino. Mr. Venino, while you're there, just very briefly, we've invested heavily. We are ahead of the game here and thank God we have our, our virtual school. And I believe the numbers, we have 80... And I believe the numbers, we have eighty-plus children in our virtual school, but we do have seventy-plus students that have opted to go to outside charter schools. Once again, the funding mechanism for charter school, that legislation needs to change because it's costing the 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 district well over one-point-two million dollars. So, can you give me a brief update on that, Mr. Venino?
Absolutely. Our yeah, our virtual school was booming when when we kicked off about not coming back to school, and we are able to keep our kids with us in our virtual school. You are correct, we have eighty students currently, K through twelve, and I'm happy to say that all students were were actively engaged in their program. And we do have, in fact, still have seventy-nine students attending outside cyber schools. We are doing our best to market our program. I know we are involved with a coalition with the IU as far as marketing all the districts who have their own program. Just we'll continue to fight. We'll continue to market how our program is better than all the other programs out there and try and and do our best to save the taxpayers of Muhlenberg this this money.
Thank you. How does this seventy-nine compare to the same time period last year?
We ended up last school year mark with eighty-five, so you lost about twenty-five to graduation. I still don't know why people are going outside cybers. I mean, we I think our program is much better. We have we have staff here at Muhlenberg who are highly involved with the students, so we have multiple levels of support. They have outstanding tech service from our tech people, and for whatever reason, when I when I talk to people, you know, they're just misinformed. So, we just got to do a a great job, a better job of marketing our product. I think over time, we're going to see those numbers decrease.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Venino. Mr. Patterson, a physical plan update.
Thank you, Dr. Matralla, members of the board. You all should have gotten a bullet a document with bullet points if you want to follow As many of you are aware, the Muhlenberg Community Library took on water from a sewer line backup due to the torrential rains and subsequent flooding that took place on Sunday, August second. Water came in from the sewer lines and the restrooms caused by the storm drains backing up due to the volume of water. There was major damage to a significant portion of the library. MSD, Muhlenberg School District owns that building. We do carry insurance on the building only, and we lease the interior of the building to the library. Our insurance carrier has sent out an adjuster. That adjuster has filed a report and given an acclaim number. I did speak with our carrier late this afternoon, and I am being told they are going to cover damages. Now, estimates received total for the initial cleanup, replacing flooring and repairing and repainting walls is over a hundred thousand dollars. And Muhlenberg School District's policy has a twenty-five thousand dollar deductible, so anything over twenty-five thousand dollars, according to our carrier, sounds like it's going to be covered at this point, which I'm sure those at the library, those folks at the library will be pleased to find that out. So, we're just waiting for final word from them, an official notice from them, and also check with the funds as an exact amount as to what they're going to cover. Muhlenberg's custodial and maintenance crews welcomed the return of staff members to the buildings these past couple weeks. The custodial staffs returned to their normal working shifts to be able to accommodate cleaning and disinfecting common areas during the day when staff members are present, and cleaning and disinfecting areas occupied by staff during the day, at night after the staff goes home. Both crews continue to take care of areas being occupied by the return of student athletes, including preparing the athletic fields and making sure outdoor common facilities, such as locker rooms and restrooms, are being cleaned and disinfected after each practice or in-between practices. We will continue to monitor the recommendations and guidelines being set forth from federal, state, from federal and state health agencies and PDE, Muhlenberg School District. Again, I am very proud of the outstanding job both the custodial and maintenance staffs have been doing. As as all of you are aware, they have been working hard each and every day since the shutdown began back in March. I think all of you remember back on June third, we had a significant wind and lightning storm that went through Muhlenberg Township, causing damage to our main electrical switch gear and some underground cabling that powered the high school. Temporary repairs were made June fourth and fifth to restore power to the high school. Permanent repairs were completed in August, and everything in the electrical main distribution behind the high school is back to normal. Muhlenberg School District also has eight electrical transformers. A complete PM, including oil oil sampling, was performed in August on those units. I'm awaiting the report of the results of that PM. And also, coming up in September, an infrared testing PM of the electrical distribution panels, motor control centers, all the schools will be taking place. This testing is done to spot any potential issues with circuit breakers, motor disconnects, and terminated connections within the panels and motor control centers. Again, a detailed report will be given to Muhlenberg School District from the service provider following the PM, following a few weeks after the PM is completed. Anyone have any questions?
Yeah, Ken, I just want to thank you for cutting trees down on Sharp Outender. That's pretty nice, in-house doing them trees, cutting them down.
Yes, the last gentleman we hired has a lot of experience doing that and working with a couple other guys, getting them the proper equipment. They did a really good job removing a lot of the dead the dead trees that were along there.
I mean, that saves a lot of money there. We can do more work in-house. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Patterson. Mr. Hardy?
Okay, thank you, Dr. Matralla. Now, moving on to a hearing of visitors. Any visitors? You have use the raise your hand function to state your name and address. You have two minutes to speak. After two minutes, your mics will be muted. Board members, refrain from speaking until they are done speaking.
Hold on a second.
Daniel.
Mr. News, you there?
He's on mute.
Yeah, I can't unmute him. He has to unmute himself.
Our technology director just said he has to unmute himself.
Unmute myself. He's good now. Can you guys hear me?
Mr. News?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Dan.
Oh, great, that's great. Thanks for having me. Listen, virtual schooling may become the primary mode of education as technology continues to integrate into our classrooms. However, one thing's very clear, the format is not suited for everyone. Children with severe disabilities who cannot function in a completely virtual format are being left behind. My son is one of these children. Nonverbal, requiring various prompting and tactile stimulation in order to complete tasks, the virtual setting is a complete disaster for him and my family. I've spoken with other parents in similar situations in the school district, as well as outside the district, in order to gain a better understanding of how to best overcome this challenge. I've spoken with educators who are eager to bring these disadvantaged childrens back and give them the services they desperately need. I've spoken online to single mothers of special needs childrens, one who stated she was crying herself to sleep every night because Muhlenberg was not doing enough to help her child. Still others who have left the district to obtain aid from other schools who allow in-person learning, like wire and missing. We, as a district, can do better than this. There is about a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty children in the high school with an IEP. You can check the numbers, they might not be exact, but for the purpose of the example, they should suffice. Out of those hundred and forty or so children, there might be roughly ten or twenty percent who simply cannot function in this format. That's roughly fifteen to thirty children. If we adopted a format much like KESY, we could split these children into two groups of seven to fifteen children and have them meet twice a week, one group on Monday and Wednesday, the other on Tuesday and Thursday. This would keep the class sizes small, as teachers could further split them up into various periods across the day, thus minimizing any risk to large gatherings. With thirty or so staff in the building already, it hardly seems reasonable that adding an additional thirty or so students, a roughly one-to-one ratio, would pose any significant health hazard so long as safety measures are followed. This could provide this could prove to be very helpful to the families and the district as well, as it would give the schools the opportunity to test their safety measures for a possible return to brick-and-mortar school in the fall with a small group, thus allowing for flexibility to learn and adapt their safety measures and practices before having a larger, more cumbersome classroom in person. My proposal is to identify these children that cannot function in this format, split them into two small groups to meet twice per week in their prospective buildings, implement their IEPs, and then utilize the data collected from these sessions to refine the school district's safety policies and procedures moving forward with the goal of returning to the brick-and-mortar schools. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Mr. News, thank you so much, and I will take your your words under consideration. Thank you so much, and I hope you did speak to our Director of Special Education, Dr. Rutt, but I want to thank you for your comments. Well said, sir.
That's it, okay.
Okay, hundred personnel. Pardon me? No, you know what? No, I'll entertain it. No, you okay with that?
We got somebody else.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, can you guys hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Jared.
Yes, yes, yes. As you said, my name is Jared White. I live currently now eleven-twenty-one Whitney Road. Yes, I'd just like to pose a question to the board. Is there anybody that a employee or former employee would be able to go to, such as a human human resource director for a grievance? Reason I ask, because if you don't know, I used to be employed by the district for just about ten years until I, in my opinion, was unjustifiably removed from my position. I tried reaching out to basically everybody in the chain of command that I have, and it seemed about the issue, and it seemed that I was merely just this was passed around from one person to one person as if they didn't want to deal with it, and that decision was made final. I'm not really worried about retaliation or anything like that because the decision has been made about my dismissal. I'm just curious as to is there anybody else since I tried to contact Dr. Matralla, obviously, and I was basically just passed off. I was kind of surprised by the decision, and I feel that of all the years I put in service to the school district with for all the kids, it should have been more than just a simple, you were gone, sir, and then nothing else to the matter. That's basically I have all I have for you guys today, and I'll thank you for hearing me.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, let's move on.
Okay.
Personnel?
Yeah.
Board, I'm going to go through the agenda if the board is ready here. Acceptance of resignations. Board is going to be asked to approve in Exhibit A one, a list of employees that have resigned. In Section five point zero two, Board is going to be asked to approve an administrative appointment, our new supervisor of accounts, replace Mr. Moyer, and she actually started today, which I'm very happy about, and I'm sure Mr. Mathias is too. In Section five point zero three, Board is going to be asked to approve appointments, professional appointments of teachers that are listed. In Section point five point zero four, Board is going to be asked to approve declassified appointments as listed. Any questions? Any comments? Any heartburn? Section five point zero five, Board is going to be asked to approve mentor assignments at the contractual rate as listed in Exhibit A two. Board is going to be asked to approve in Section five point zero six, an FMLA leave for one of our employees. Board is going to be asked to approve summer hours for our new dean of students at the contractual professional rate in Exhibit A three, under Section five point zero seven. Board is going to be asked to approve a professional employee contract for a tenured teacher as listed in Section five point zero eight. Any questions? Any comments? Any heartburn? Section five point zero nine, Board is going to be asked to approve guest teachers for the 2021 school year. Board is going to be asked to approve in Section five point one zero, co-curricular resignations. Board is going to be asked to approve with an addendum item. There is an addendum item. You have you have items A, B, C, D, there's an addendum item E under co-curricular appointments. Review that in Exhibit A six. Board is going to be asked to approve building co-curricular assignments in five point one two and five point one three. Board is going to be asked to approve sports event monitors for the 2021 school year. Any questions? Any comments? Any heartburn? In Item six under management, Board is going to be asked to approve an election, the election of PSBA officers. And those officers are listed there for your review, and this will be this will be as part of the PSBA, which was normally held in in October. I think it will be virtual this year, but these items are there for you. Any questions? Any comment?
Yeah, Dr. Matralla and actually fellow board members, the only in looking through this, the only contested race is a vice president-elect. So, when we come around, you know, unless someone can speak for Sabrina, you know, I've known Dan for O.K. for many, many years, and he's diligent and would serve as a great vice president, subsequently a a president, and would represent all of us, board members, extremely well. So, when we get to that in the regular section, I'd be honored to make a a motion for the slated people, including Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Voight. We have no items under the physical plant transportation. It's time. We did have a discussion here earlier. Board is going to be asked to approve the financial reports in the Section eight point zero one. In an eight point zero two, Board is going to be asked to approve the annual auditing services, which can be reviewed in Exhibit D two. Now, there's some new not new names here that have to be on here with our with the accepting of our new supervisor of accounts. So, Board is going to be asked to approve the authorization for wire fund transfers and signatures on bank accounts as listed in Section eight point zero three. In education, Board is going to be asked to approve in Exhibit E one, under policy, a 2021 school year non-resident student as listed. And in Section nine point zero two, an intern from Alveria University with our athletic department. In Section nine point zero three, the adoption of our instructional materials for the 2021 school year, as in accordance with the Pennsylvania School Code, Article eight, can review that in Exhibit E three. Any questions? Any comments? Any heartburn? Okay, Section nine point zero four, Board is going to be asked to approve a certificate of support students. And an addendum item in Section nine point zero five, Board is going to be asked to approve our DocuSign account for our special education department. This is for our IEPs, NORPs, which has to be done. This will be funded through grant funding, and that can be reviewed in Exhibit E five. We don't have any student activities at this time. The Board will be asked to approve the minutes in Section eleven point zero one. There there's no old business. Now, the new business counselor, Bullen, is here, and I did speak to him earlier, but I can wait till October. I do have a settlement agreement and release, and I would have probably wanted to discuss that in executive session, but it can't wait until next month, but I will be acting on this. It is already it is already completed, and it's just here for approval. it is already completed, and it's just here for approval, and the Board was apprised of it earlier, uh, but I'm going to be taking some additional action on this, but I will wait till October. Counselor, will that be okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. At this time, I'll go hand the meeting back over to President White.
Do we have new business? Dr. Matrola?
Uh, that was the only item I had, sir.
Okay, I have an item under new business.
Okay.
Is it all right, Mr. Hardy?
Yes, go ahead.
All right, actually, fellow Board members, the Peasers Board of Trustees has an elected school board member on the Board. Uh, it's a three-year term, and I am running for that position, and I need five signatures from five different school boards. Uh, so I'm asking those who are actually physically in attendance, if you would consider supporting me. And I believe Pat or Dr. Joe has the form. Uh, at some point in time, the, all of the school districts in the state will get the opportunity to vote uh, on this position, and if elected, uh, I would serve on the Board from January 1st, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two, till the end of 2023, which coincides with my term on the Mullenberg School Board. So I'd ask for your consideration, and then I'll be calling a few of you to ask for your signatures, so, thanks.
I would support your auto.
Thanks, Rick.
Okay, thank you, Otto.
Mr. Hardy?
Okay, moving on to a hearing of visitors. You'll have two minutes to speak your question. Don't see anybody?
Nobody?
Okay, thank you. Moving on to, uh, number fifty. Mullenberg School District, Mullenberg CTC Board Visitor of the Month, check the calendar. Moving on to number sixty, review of the calendar of events. Moving on to number seventeen. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Meeting is adjourned. Moving on to the regular Board meeting of the twenty ninth, the ninth of twenty twenty. Meeting is now called to order. Mr. Secretary, call please. Gross, here. Hardy, here.
Houghmaster.
Here.
Heineman.
Here.
Lupia?
Here.
Gare?
Here.
Mangle?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
White?
Here.
Day nineteen. Uh, moving on to educational presentations. Dr. Matrola?
We can go on to the next ones.
Okay. Uh, hearing of visitors. If there's any visitors, will you use the raise the hand option? You have two minutes to make your statement. Or remember, please, for any student that feels they're not speaking. Here we go. Done, okay, moving on. Committee report? Burke County. Intermediate Unit.
Yes, I wasn't able to participate in the last meeting due to work, uh, but everybody gets a copy of what happened at the BCIU Board meeting, and that's all I have to go by also.
Okay, thank you. Reading Mullenberg CTC, Mr. Pinkel.
Our meeting is on next Monday, so I have nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Burke County Tax Liaison, Shane, yes, Otto White.
Again, no meeting, so nothing to report.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, sorry, Shane, I'll take this meeting, I'll take this one, yeah, there's nothing to report, thank you.
Well done.
Okay, thank you. PSBA Liaison, Mr. Otto White.
Yes, the, the only thing I want to bring up, we already touched on, and that's the election of the Board Officers for, for next year and the upcoming convention, uh, which is planned to be virtual, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you. I support you too. Mullenberg City Library, Mr. Randy Madera.
Yes, I have nothing to report, I wasn't sending any kind of report, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mullenberg Tax and Orality Liaison, Mr. Lupia?
Yes, nothing really new to report, uh, next meeting is in two weeks, uh, and the Dunkin' Donuts is near completion on Route 61, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Education program, Dr. Putrick.
I have no report this evening, President Hardy.
Okay, thank you, sir. So listeners, comment?
Uh, I just have those two resolutions under new business for the assessment appeals.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anybody have any questions? Superintendent's comment, Dr. Matrola?
I just want to thank everybody, uh, I want to thank the Mullenberg community, all of our teachers, our staff members, our maintenance workers, you're doing a phenomenal job here for our kids. Uh, and once again, if anybody wants to see our kids back here in traditional environment, it certainly is me. Uh, to all of our parents out there. My heart aches for you. We will get through this, and we have to be ready to pivot at any time. And as some of the conversation earlier, um, uh, yes, there's no question, we have to be prepared for the long haul here, if things do not change statistically. And we will have to make adjustments, and we're definitely in a cadence right now, which is a positive thing. The number one thing as an adult is to protect our kids, and I'm very concerned for them in many ways. I'm very concerned for our country, our democracy. There's a lot going on in our world today. And if we do not have a strong public education system, things are not going to look well in the long run for us as a society, so we really need to get around this, be proud to be Americans, and work hard to find ways that we can build bridges amongst each other. Number one is our kids, and to do everything we can for them. I want to leave with one quote from Franklin Roosevelt that he delivered on January twentieth, nineteen thirty-seven. Franklin Roosevelt said, "The test of our progress is not whether we add more to the abundance of those who have much. It is whether we provide enough for those who have little." We will continue to work with you, and it's my duty, and it's an honor and a privilege to serve you. Mr. Hardy?
Okay, thank you, Dr. Matrola. Moving on, number eight, Personnel. Resolution thirty-nine A through thirty-nine M. Thirty-nine A is acceptance of resignations. Thirty-nine B, administrative appointments. Thirty-nine C, professional appointments. Thirty-nine D, classified appointments. Thirty-nine E, mentor assignments. Thirty-nine F, request of leave of absence for FMLA leave. Thirty-nine G, approval of summer hours. Thirty-nine H, award professional employee contract for tenured teacher. Thirty-nine I, guest teacher for the 2021 school year. Resolution thirty-nine J, co-curricular resignation. Thirty-nine K, co-curricular appointment. Thirty-nine L, Philly, co-curricular assignment. Thirty-nine M, sports event monitor for the 2021 school year. Is there a resolution? Is there a motion?
I make a motion.
Rose, second.
Okay, roll call, please.
First, yes. Hardy?
Yes.
Houghmaster?
Yes.
Heineman?
Yes.
Lupia?
Yes.
Madera?
Yes.
Mangle?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to number nine, Management, Resolution number forty, election of PSBA officer.
And Mr. Hardy?
Yes, sir.
Uh, okay, may I be so honored to, uh, to make the motion to elect Dr. David Hein, or Mr. David Hein as president-elect, Mr. Dan O'Keefe as vice president-elect, Mr. Michael Gossett as treasurer, Michael Facinato, Bethel, uh, for trustee, Mary Ann Neal for trustee, and on the forum for the steering committee, Stephen Shiroki and Tracy Long.
Okay, thank you.
I make a second.
Master, second, okay. Roll call, please.
Hardy?
Yes.
Houghmaster?
Yes.
Heineman?
Yes.
Lupia?
Yes.
Madera?
Yes.
Mangle?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, number ten, physical plant and transportation, there's no items. Moving on to number eleven, Budget and Finance, Resolution forty-one through forty-three. Resolution forty-one, approval of financial reports. Resolution forty-two, annual auditing services. Annual budget, uh, forty-three, authorization to wire transfers and signatures on bank accounts. Is there a motion?
Mangle moves.
Thank you.
Rose, second.
Roll call, please.
Houghmaster?
Yes.
Heineman?
Yes.
Lupia?
Yes.
Madera?
Yes.
Mangle?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Rose? Yes. Hardy?
Yes. Number twelve, Education, Resolution forty-four through Resolution forty-eight. Forty-four, student to begin 2020, 21 school year as a non-residential student. Number forty-five, Alvernia University Athletic Trainer Interim. Number forty-six, adoption of revised curriculum textbooks and instructional materials for the 2021 school year. Number forty-seven, certificate of support students. Number forty-eight, DocuSign account for special education. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Lupia?
Heineman was on the motion.
Roll call, please.
Heineman?
Yes.
Lupia?
Yes.
Madera?
Yes.
Mangle?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Rose? Yes. Hardy?
Yes.
Houghmaster?
Yes.
Okay, there's no items under student activities. Minute, number fourteen, Resolution number forty-nine. Rule of Minutes, resolve that the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting for the July eighth, twenty twenty, and the regular Board meeting of July eighth, twenty twenty be approved as submitted. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I think you meant August, Wayne.
Yeah.
August. Yeah, okay.
Just, um, for the record, under, on page ultimately sixty-six of the, okay, that's committee of the whole, okay, never mind, never mind.
Okay, is there a motion?
Nelson move. Heineman second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 As have it. Is there any old business? Hearing none. Is there any new business?
I have one item or two items of new business. One is to, uh, a resolution to authorize Kozlov Stouts Solicitors to withdraw the tax, a real estate tax assessment appeal filed by the district in the Berks County Court of Common, please, regarding the property owned by Target located at forty-two twenty North Fifth Street. So I'd need a motion in a second.
Okay, is there a motion?
Nelson move.
Lupia, second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Here. Madera?
Yes.
Mangle?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Rose? Yes. Hardy?
Yes.
Houghmaster?
Yes.
Heineman?
Yes.
Lupia?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I have a second resolution, which is to authorize Kozlov Stout as Solicitors to intervene on behalf of the Mullenberg School District in the Real Estate Tax Assessment Appeal filed by General Battery and Ceramic Corporation for the, regarding the property located at three thousand Rosedale Avenue, Mullenberg Township, Berks County, Pennsylvania. Need a motion in a second.
I'll make that motion, Heineman.
Houghmaster, second.
Thank you, roll call, please.
Mangle?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Rose? Yes. Hardy?
Yes.
Houghmaster?
Yes.
Heineman?
Yes.
Lupia?
Yes.
Madera?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other new business? Hearing none. Moving on to hearing of visitors. Hearing none, okay. Moving on to number eighteen, Mullenberg School District. Reading Mullenberg CTC Board Visitor of the Month, check the schedule. Moving on to number nineteen, review of the Board meetings and the calendar of events. And number twenty, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
White moves.
Mangle second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, as have it. Meeting is adjourned.
Take care, everybody.
Good night.
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 Night.